Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Tim Cooper and I'm the Executive Director of the ARC of Alabama. And we're happy to be presenting the Town Hall meetings on many topics, the home and community-based services, the community waiver program, self-direction. The way it got to us to be a sponsor is the Associate Commissioner Kathy Sawyer challenged us at the ARC of Alabama to, we need to get the education out to the parents and the families to make sure they understood what the settings rules was, what community waiver and the self-direction that you have an option of. And so I took it on that when she gave it to me and brought Kim in. You'll meet here in a few minutes and we're going around the state and the different regions and presenting the material to you. And you'll find out that if you're here and you want to listen to other meetings, it's being streamed live and Kim will introduce everybody. But I want to thank you for being here. I know how the Birmingham traffic was. When I left, I was brown-headed. So you can kind of see what I'm, what I'm at right now. But just a few housekeeping. If you need the facilities, it's down the hallway here to the right. We have soft drinks and water in the cooler and you've got snacks on the table. For y'all out there in virtual land, thank you for attending. If you have questions, you'll put them into the chat or ask a question and Mr. Alex back there will get them to us so we can answer them. But at this time, I want to welcome Kim Spangler, our outreach, family outreach coordinator to get this event started. Here you go, Kim.
Thank you. Are we good? Okay. I'm Kim and I am the Family Outreach Coordinator for ARC of Alabama. Thank you all for being here today. And I appreciate your time and driving and spending this amount of time with us today. We want your input. We want your ideas. We want your suggestions. We want your thoughts and concerns. So you have some little white cards on your table. If you're here present, feel free to write those down. We will take them up and ask them anonymously if you want to do it that way. If you want to raise your hand and be seen and heard, we can do it that way too. Just please, please, please hold them to the end so we can get through all the information in the right amount of time. And if you want to write it down and then ask it, that's fine too. For everybody out there online, if you want to post your comment or your question into the chat, Alex will read those back to us at the end. So like Tim said, we're here today to kind of update our families and our parents on the latest and the greatest with HTBS, Home and Community-Based Settings Rule. And we're going to watch a short video online for that and then kind of open it up for a question since we've got some really smart people here outside of myself that could probably answer those questions really well. And then we're going to have Mr. Byron White. He is with the department and he's helping us facilitate the community waiver program. And he's got all the expert knowledge in that direction. And that is a new waiver program for Alabama. And so we're rolling it out as we speak. Y'all come on in. And then last but not least, we'll go over some of the self-directed services and then supported decision-making, which is now a law in Alabama. We can say that. The governor has signed it into law. So we're proud and excited about that. We think it's going to play a big role in guardianship reform. So those are the new hot topics to be discussed. And we will go from there and I will introduce Mr. White. We've got some handouts coming your way. And we've got the resource list for those of you online that kind of references our handouts. So you can look up what we're handing out online in person at home too. All right. So Mr. White, if you'll join us, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And he came all the way from Montgomery, y'all. Let's give him a hand for being here.
He was able to escape the madness today. It's a happy Mother's Day, all you mothers. This weekend is a special weekend for everyone. So I hope you all have a very lovely weekend. So I am Byron White. I'm the Director of the Community Waiver Program for the Department of Mental Health's DD Division in Central Office. This is still somewhat of a new position for me. I, for a long time, coordinated the employment initiatives for the division. Back in 2008, the Commissioner at the time at the department reached out to me at VR. I was working for vocational rehabilitation, coordinating supported employment. It says the Department of Mental Health is really beginning to move in a new direction. And would you come help us put together some employment plans so we can support more of our folks receiving waiver services to hopefully have an opportunity to work competitively in their community? So I said, I'll give it a shot. So almost 16 years later now, I'm still at the Department of Mental Health. So I've been around a long time. That's my email address and also my phone number. If you need to reach out to me anytime. You know, our mission at the department is to serve, empower, and support. And we have three divisions, Administration, the DD Division, and then we have Division of Mental Health and Substance Use. So I'm going to talk to you today about the community waiver program specifically, but I do want to mention just some other information about the division. We operate three waivers and of course Medicaid waivers is a way to deliver services that help people avoid going into an institution. So with these waivers, they can receive services that enable them to live in their home and community versus a nursing home or other type of institution. Prior to October of 2021, we only operated two waivers, the ID Intellectual Disabilities Waiver and the Living at Home Waiver. The ID is a very comprehensive waiver. It has a long list of services. The most popular service in the ID waiver has historically been community-based residential, often referred to as group home services. A lot of folks reach out to us wanting their loved one to be able to live in a group home. And the Living at Home Waiver has an expenditure cap and it really is intended to do exactly that. Help people continue to live at home with supports and services. So back at the end of 2018, 2019, we started talking about the potential of a third waiver. And it's a demonstration waiver. And what the demonstration does is gives us an opportunity to try new ways of delivering Medicaid waiver services. So it often gets referred to as a pilot. You've heard people have pilot projects where you're trying out things. You're trying to work through all the kinks. That's what the demonstration is allowing us to do. I joke often, the C for community, some days I say complex and confusing because it is, has some complex pieces. So today, I hope I don't put you in information overload. I did bring just a brief CWP brochure that will kind of refresh you on some of the information we talked about. And then this is the call center brochure that talks about the process for getting on the waiting list for any of the three waivers. The goal of the CWP, we want to of course maximize the capabilities of Alabamians living with ID. We want to be able to support their full participation in their communities, including opportunities for integrated employment. We want people to be able to live as much as possible in their natural supports, keep families together, or them live independently with supports. This is the call center number. Again, I've got the brochure here. This is the starting point. If you've not gotten to this point, you're interested in your loved one getting on the statewide waiting list for Medicaid waiver services operated by our department, you start by contacting that number. The 310 is here. Let me recognize a couple of people since we're there. Kendra, if you'll just kind of briefly, maybe a minute or two, come on up here so they can see and hear you and tell them what your role is. I know I'm putting you on the spot, but it's good that you're here because.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm glad to see everybody here. I'm Kendra Edson. I'm the Executive Director of the Jefferson County 310, which is Jefferson County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Authorities. We actually don't serve just Jefferson County any longer. We now actually serve seven counties within the state of Alabama and have three offices. We have one here in Homewood, just down the road. And then we have one in Stilacaga and one in Aniston. And we serve the seven counties now. But as for Jefferson County, we do the intake. When you call the 1-800 number for the call center at Central Office, the Department of Mental Health, then they will put you through to the county in which you reside in, to an intake worker at one of the 310 offices, who will then guide you through the process in relation to all the documentation needed to put the individual on the statewide waiting list for services. And then once you go into services, if you're on, if you're on the ID or the Living at Home Waiver, then you would receive services from a 310 support coordinator. Otherwise, you will receive support coordination from the CWP Support Coordinator just as well. And the goal is always to have an individual be as independent as they can possibly be. And in the community, of course, our goal for everybody would be eventually to hopefully live on their own with supports, have employment with or without supports, because that's what we look for. We don't want to ever hold anybody back. I mean, I know people a lot of times think that, you know, you just want people, I've always heard residential or day program. And that's been instilled in us for so long. It's, you know, it's kind of hard to get away from that. And I know as parents, it's even harder for you to get away from because it's a fear of letting go. But, you know, we, we think it's great for you to let them gain their independence and get out and spread their wings. And nowadays we have so many things with remote supports outside of just direct care staff that individuals can live independently in the community. And we hope that, you know, everyone would be able to have that opportunity at some time in their life. So we would just ask that you always try to at least be open-minded and try to give them that opportunity as well. I know it's scary, but it is great to see. And I always tell parents, don't wait till, you know, it's something that you, it's a dire need. Do it now while you can enjoy it with your sibling, your brother or sister, or your child. So that you can see the success of them in living as independent as possible.
So this is, this slide is just really reviewing all of the information that's gathered in the eligibility determination. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because it is in the brochure here, but generally it's an IQ of 69 and below. And then some adaptive functioning deficits and, and which is measured by the I-CAP. The 310 again gets the packet together and submits it to the regional office for the person then to be placed on the waiting list. So the community waiver program, we have five. This is where the complex part comes in. Is everybody here either, is anybody outside of Jefferson County? I know Veronica and Kyle. Okay. The CWP for this region is only available in Jefferson County. So if you're in one of the neighboring counties, that would still be the ID and Living at Home. Let me make it clear. For new enrollees coming into services in Region 5, the CWP is the only option. We will no longer be enrolling individuals in the ID and Living at Home in the 11 counties I'm going to identify here in just a second. But the goals of the community waiver program, we know on the ID Living at Home, people get served when they reach crisis. They may have been on the waiting list for a long time and they finally got to a point, they're about to be homeless. Maybe the aging parent has passed away, can no longer serve the person. And so there's just no options. And so they come to us and those are the cases we get, you know, traditionally on ID especially is that crisis kind of referral. We're trying in the CWP, serve people before they get in crisis. And you'll see here in a second, some of the criteria, it's different. Rather than getting to the top of the waiting list, which is the process on the ID Living at Home, we look at longest length of time on the waiting list. So people have been on the waiting list the longest. That's an enrollment priority category, length of time on the waiting list. Now, we still serve the people that have crisis. But we're enrolling those folks that have been on the waiting list in, you know, 10 and 15 years. We've had a lot of folks in our first round of enrolment that have waited more than 10 years. We want to keep families together. So as much as possible, rather than sending the person on to a residential program slash group home, we try to put supports in the home, personal assistance in the home, personal assistance, community, respite, those kinds of services. So families can stay together, preserve that natural living arrangement. And we want to also support people in their own apartment. We've got people on the community waiver program that probably would have never thought they could live independent in their own apartment. That's actually what's happening. They're in their own apartment and we have supports wrapped around, you know, that goes in, remote supports. And a combination of those kinds of services are allowing people to live independently in their, in their own residence. It's not going to work for everyone, but we are having quite a bit of success. So here's the demonstration counties. The demonstration again, as I mentioned, is five years. So in the regions, Region 1, the CWP is the new waiver in Madison, Morgan, and Limestone Counties. In Region 2, it's Tuscaloosa and Walker. Region 3, Mobile and Ballin Counties. Region 4 is Montgomery, Elmore, and Houston. And in Region 5, it's Jefferson. And you'll see there are just under 50% of the individuals on the current waiting list reside in one of these 11 counties. So just briefly on eligibility, it's people with ID ages 3 years of age or older, meeting the eligibility for the ID and Living at Home waivers. And I've already mentioned what those eligibility criterias are. So I won't review that again. But we do have a second option. It's for people with ID ages 22 above, you see almost, but not quite meeting the eligibility for ID and Living at Home. This would be individuals that have significant functional limitations in a minimum of one area of adaptive functioning versus the three, which is required on the ID Living at Home. So as I've already mentioned, criticality was replaced by enrollment priority categories. And to tell you again what those categories are, number one, how long has the person been on the waiting list? So the people on the waiting list longer, that's the enrollment priority category. They, they desire to preserve their existing living arrangement. They want to continue to live with their family. Supports come in and help make that happen. They want to obtain and maintain competitive integrated employment or a combination of the two. They want to live with family or independently and they want to work. Those are the priority categories for individuals getting enrolled. And this is all the complex part now I talked about. There are five enrollment groups. And each enrollment group has a distinct set of services and an expenditure cap. So each enrollment group has its own budget. And you work with your support coordinator in selecting your services and getting all those services to work out beautifully within your budget. Let me also introduce Erica Player back here. She is our Support Coordinator Supervisor for Region 5. And as Kendra mentioned, new people coming into the CWP, the Department of Mental Health actually employs the support coordinators for Region 5. So Erica is the supervisor and she will eventually have a staff of five or six, Erica. I think right now it's five. But Jefferson County is targeted to be the largest region for enrollments. We're not there yet, but you know, you think about Birmingham area. So Group 1 is children ages 3 to 13 with ID who live with their family or other natural supports. And don't get hung up on the expenditure caps because those are about to change. We are going through some rate increases. And when the rates increase, the expenditure cap will also increase. I just went ahead and listed them because you'll see what the caps were when we rolled this out. But we're in the process right now of submitting a, an amendment to the community waiver program, which will go to CMS for approval and all these expenditure caps will change. So don't get hung up on that. Group 2 is transition age youth, 14 to 21. Again, they live with family or other natural supports. Or if they're 18 to 21, they could be living independently. And you'll see there's expenditure cap again. Each group has its own expenditure cap. Group 3 is the largest enrollment group right now. It's working age or older adults, 22 years of age or older with ID who live with a family or other natural supports, or they live independently, or they can live independently in a, in a non-intensive supported living arrangement. And those are a combination of expenditure caps. If you're living with a family, it's 30. But if you independently live in your own apartment, it's as much as 45,000. Group 4, persons 3 years of age or older with ID who are unable. This is the ones we talk about in the community residential. These are individuals who can't continue to live with family for whatever reason. And they cannot live independently. So these are the individuals that end up in a community-based residential program or non-intensive supported living arrangement. And that's a variance also of an expenditure cap, sort of depending on the support needs. And then Group 5 is the group I mentioned that only has to have the one adaptive functioning deficit. And we've, we're hoping to be able to serve additional people who wouldn't traditionally qualify or be eligible for the waiver in Group 5, but so far that has not happened. We've only enrolled one person since we rolled the waiver out. And I will tell you, it was approved in October of 2021 and it launched November the 1st, 2021. So we're now in our second year of the five-year demonstration. I always put, I put this slide in here, community-based residential programs, many request ID waiver for placement in group homes. We still get a lot of calls. As Kendra said, families are kind of accustomed to, they call and say, I want a group home. Or Department Human Resources has a referral. They call and say, we need to get someone's on a group home. Well, we need to assess really what the person's needs are. You know, it may be after the assessment period and gathering the records and meeting with the person, that might be the appropriate step. But we want to avoid placement in group homes as much as possible and that become a last resort. So eligibility for Group 4, it's only available to individuals who require this service for health and safety. So if a person can live independently with supports, that's what we want the CWP to do, to make sure we make that possible. And it's also required to address crisis. Everyone that gets referred to Group 4 and approved for Group 4 pretty much are in a somewhat of a crisis. Again, it could be a family member has passed away. They're about to be homeless, potentially have some very significant behavioral issues and some involve medical issues, you know, things that would prevent them from being able to live independently. We do review all referrals for this group. So there's a special review team. It's made up of CWP staff, psychologists, nurses, to get a really good, complete a really good assessment of the information. So it's not like I'm in Montgomery making that decision when I'm not a nurse or a doctor or psychologist. We, we have people that are qualified to look and read and interpret medical and psychological information in making the decision. We're not trying to prevent people from getting this service if they need it. We're just trying to make sure they have an opportunity to look at other options, maybe in the past that were never considered. This is a list of a lot of the services in the CWP. I mean, each group has its own list. I didn't want to break each enrollment group down with a list, but these are the, the more popular services right now that are being provided in the, in the CWP. You know, we get down, for example, Group 1, a 3-year-old to 13-year-old, they're not going to need employment services. So employment service will not be an option for, for Group 1. But for Group 2 and 3, employment services are certainly there. And I always like to tell a couple of success stories. This is a success story out of Region 2. When this individual was, we were made aware of Jamie. Even the support coordinator said, we need to find him a residential program. And so when we started gathering information on Jamie, he had had some pretty significant behavioral issues at home and had been in and out of the hospital multiple times because of those behaviors. And so when the last time the family dropped him off, they said, can't come back home. And so he was kind of left to the hospital. And we intervened, had a really good support coordination agency, worked with, with, with Jamie. And at the end of the day, Jamie is now living in his own apartment. He was able to reunite with his father. So they're actually sharing an apartment. The update is he now has been referred to VR and actually has a job. So he's gone from hospitalization, being told needs to be in a group home, to having his own apartment and working and just doing great. I mean, it's just a wonderful success story. And then Anita is another example of success. She spent about 15 years in a residential program in Chicago and her mom decided to move to Alabama to be closer to another one of her kids because mom was beginning to age. So when they arrived in Tuscaloosa, she got on the waiting list and she was on the waiting list for more than 15 years. And so with the CWP, looking at enrollment priority category as length of time on the waiting list, she was able to enroll pretty soon after the waiver launched. And when the support coordinator was talking to her about what she wanted, she wanted to work. I want a job. And she was fascinated with cleaning, I think, when she was in the resident, the Inglewood facility. I think she was on a mobile crew doing janitorial kind of work. So the story goes, the family attended a family reunion at a hotel there in Tuscaloosa and she kind of thought that would be a great place to work. And so the employment staff met with the hotel, set up an interview and Anita interviewed and was hired. And you'll see that she's making $13 an hour and her hours increased to about 28 hours a week and she's doing great. It's just a really great success story. These are the kind of stories we want to, you know, to continue to promote. Not everybody's going to have a job. But again, for folks that want to work, we want to give them that opportunity. So just a few updates on the waiver, since it is a demonstration and what we're really, what we're really doing is an evaluation. So we're evaluating the CWP. I'll use the word loosely against the ID LAH, just kind of seeing if we're getting better outcomes, maybe for the same or less money. That's kind of the goal. You get better outcomes for the same or less money. So it's a really huge involved evaluation component. We have an external evaluator that's gathering all this data that we have to submit every quarter to CMS. That takes a little bit of the fun out of the job. Those quarterly monitor reports, they're very involved and a lot of information. But I will give you just a few, a little bit of data from what's happened thus far. So we currently have 47 providers across the 11 counties, providing a variety of all the services. And some providers specialize and some offer multiple services. They all get specialized training. As of March the 31st, we had enrolled 240 individuals. Now, our goal the first year was 500 and we did not meet that goal. There were a lot of reasons. CMS delayed the approval several times and there was a little bit of loss of momentum and enthusiasm. And then COVID hit. So all that kind of happened. And then we finally got it approved. And we started trying to get people enrolled. Well, people that's been waiting for 15 years, some of their eligibility information was outdated and old. So we had to, you know, kind of circle back and backtrack and get updated information, you know, reach out to the 310s to help us, our folks step in. So we feel like we're, we've kind of regained some momentum now. And last quarter, we had about 120% increase in enrollments over the previous quarter. So to me, that's encouraging that we're now on the right track. Most of the 500 initial slots are allocated. That means we did some outreach. We talked to families and said, you're interested in the CWP? And they said, yeah. So that's an allocated slot. They've kind of spoken for one. They just haven't been enrolled yet. So most of the slots remaining are allocated. 90% of the people that have enrolled so far are living with family or other natural supports. 53% have said they do want a job and just under 30% are self-directing their services. And I'm not going to get into, I did a few slides on self-direction. Is anyone self-directing besides Kyle? Any other families self-directing? You ever heard of self-direction? I will tell you, the CWP, we really wanted to promote self-direction. And one of the primary reasons, I guess y'all are familiar or aware, right now we have a nationwide worker shortage, right? It's hard to find workers regardless of the industry. Our provider agencies are struggling. The providers that, you know, offer the residential service, the day programs that Kendra mentioned, they're having a hard time finding workers. As a result, you know, we are, again, I won't necessarily say struggling, but it's challenged. We're challenged on a daily basis to sometimes access services because the provider's saying, we don't have staff. We have any providers here? I thought so. You agree what I'm saying? Yeah. We call these folks, say, hey, we don't have any staff. So self-direction was an option we wanted to promote. So families, we're having a hard time, these providers, you know, finding providers. What about you? Do you know people at your church? Do you have friends? Do you have family members who might be interested in being a paid worker to support your loved one? So that's kind of what self-direction does in a nutshell. You sort of choose who you want to work with your, with your loved one. And in the CWP, we have more services that can be self-directed than is currently available in the ID. Now, probably as we move forward and we see all these wonderful self-directed outcomes in the CWP, working employment service is one you can self-direct. I suspect that services will be expanded into the ID and Living at Home. I believe Veronica and Kyle and Nikki are going to talk a little bit about self-direction since they experience it on a daily basis. And they're the experts, certainly more so than me. Yep.
So. Put this on. I'm not going to talk very long because I really don't really run the show. It's really all about Kyle and his supports, which is what it really is supposed to be. That's what self-direction is about because I'm aging and I may not be here in 20 years. So that's what, or 10 years. So that's what we're really preparing for. But my name is Veronica McGee and this is my son Kyle McGee. He has been on his IDD waiver since he was, Kyle's 23. So Kyle, you've been at three years now on his IDD waiver. So we had started out on the ED waiver. We were transitioned, which is the Elderly and Disabled Waiver. Kyle was on that waiver at age 6, I think 7. And then we were on the waiting list for the IDD waiver and we got the golden ticket call when Kyle was about 20, 20, I think, yeah, 20, right before he turned 20. So I, unfortunately, I, I was in the right communication world where I was told about these waivers at a very young age for Kyle. where I was told about these waivers at a very young age for Kyle. So that's been a really fortunate thing for our family. But really, self-direction came into our lives because, again, we were having not good outcomes with providers. And so we really, really were so excited that Kyle was the very first person in that elderly and disabled waiver called Personal Choices to be chosen to self-direct his personal care. And that was when he was like, they called it something different, it was called Personal Choices. So he was actually, and I don't like to use the word self-direction as much because I think it's a system word. So for a lot of people who don't understand what self-direction is, it really is more of a life term. It's really choice and more control over your life. So I, when I talk to people, you know, I don't really like to get caught up in that system word of self-direction. It's just basically for Kyle, it's freedom of choice and it's control over his life. So I know a lot of people right now might be struggling with understanding whether they want to choose self-direction on their CWP waiver. But I think personally for, for our family, I think just empowering Kyle so he felt, you know, really confident enough and families feel confident enough and empowered enough to really ask for what they need and for what they want. And when you're able to show, Miss, it's Erica, right? When you were able to explain to Erica that, you know, a self-advocate can say, you know, this is just, they got to feel confident and comfortable enough for asking to be able to, it's not can I self-direct? Or am I allowed to self-direct? It's what is self-direction? It's really just saying that I can do this. I can, I can go out with the right help, hire who I want to hire, you know, advocate for what I need to help make my life the way I want to make it. So that's kind of really a little bit in a nutshell what self-direction is about. Tim and I are working on a, and Kim are working on a video series that the ARC has helped fund, the state ARC of Alabama that we are currently working on. A real, an Alabama care will also be involved. We're really trying to create a video series that will help explain to self-advocates and their families and more this kind of language, choice, freedom, you know, what self-direction can do for their lives and how they can access it. So I think it's something that's really needed. I'm a member of a large organization, a national organization called Applied Self-Direction. So I've kind of made self-direction kind of my, my, my passion because I want to help as many families as I can to see how they can possibly utilize choice and freedom. But I really would like to take a minute and if there are any questions about what, what Nikki and Kyle might be sharing with you, please type them in the chat. We feel pretty confident to answer any questions you might have about. And I have to tell you, Alabama is one of the most fortunate states in the country right now. The CWP is probably the most robust self-directed services waiver out there right now. I know that because I am on, work with states all over the country, understanding how they're building their waiver programs for self-direction and what they're doing and how they're doing it. In Alabama, this CWP waiver, there is not another waiver currently in, in our country that is this close to getting approved that has this many self-directed services. So we are very, very fortunate in our state for all the people that have worked so hard to really bring this, this waiver to fruition. And we're very fortunate. So I very much encourage families to really consider some of the, the options on this waiver. And I think how this waiver is going to be the most successful, if we can show the outcomes of how self-direction can really improve someone like Kyle with, has the most complex additional support needs that Kyle can do. He does whatever he wants with all the supports he needs, it's, it's his life. So we are on the ADD waiver. We are advocating very hard for those same options to be amended to our waivers so that we can have what the CWP has when it comes to self-direction. So we're working on that right now. So I'm just going to let Kyle talk for a little bit and this is Nikki. Nikki, how long have you been with Kyle? Okay, she's going to take it away. Do we have a minute for her to chat for a second? If that enough time, you guys? Sure, I don't want to spend it all on self-direction, but I think it's a very, very, very important part of the, of, as we age, are we knowing that our loved ones are going to be, going to be able to have choice?
Hello, I'm Kyle and this is my support person, Nikki. We will be talking about what we do throughout the day and how Nikki helps me.
So I've been with Kyle for a year and four months. We met through a mutual friend of ours and I have a background as a CNA. So I was in the nursing home for a little while, working there. And I got introduced to Veronica and Kyle. And then Kyle decided that he wanted to hire me. So it was completely his choice. So when they hired me, Veronica introduced me to a calendar so that we can keep up with what we're supposed to do throughout the day and stuff like that. Give him choices on what he wants to do. But he's got two jobs. One job I help him out, the other job, he has his other work coach who helps him. I give him a lot of choices throughout the day of what he wants to do. And if he doesn't want to do it, we just don't do it. Simple as that. What else was I supposed to be talking about? Sorry, I got thrown into this, you guys, and I'm very nervous. Financially. Oh, my wage is great, just saying. The nursing home, I got paid like twelve dollars there. With Kyle, I get paid twenty-two, twenty-five right now. So it's a whole lot better. And that is something I'm very thankful for, but I'm also thankful that I've got to meet Kyle and Veronica and his family. Because they have shown me a lot. It took me a minute to figure this out and how to, you know, program things that Kyle would want to say when I give him the option on that. After, yeah, for real. Hour, I work eight hours with him. In that eight hours, we are not home. We have so many activities throughout the day. He goes to his job first and then after he gets done with work, we either, I either take him to ride his horse, take him swimming, volunteer in a lot of places. Like I said, I got thrown into this, so. So this is an app, it's got the calendar and every day we have something. He volunteers a whole lot of places. It's kind of actually neat. At first I didn't like it because I'm just shy and I like meeting new people, it's just not my thing. But since I've been with Kyle, I have to do this and, you know, I've actually quite enjoyed it now. Right, Kyle? Are we done? Yeah.
That's a much better explanation than I could have done on self-direction. I had the slides here directly off our website, but it's so much better to hear it from folks that are actually utilizing the service. And then you decide, is it right for you? And I'm sure Veronica could talk you through that one also, is it right, you know, deciding if it's right for you? I will say this, in the CWP, the wages are even probably better than they are in the ID. I think it's twenty-five or twenty-six dollars an hour in the CWP. The ID, the ID waiver pays there, so he's on the ID waiver. Yes, yes. So what happens is you become an employer of record, that, you know, someone in the, like, is that you Veronica? Are you the?
So my husband Steve, Kyle's dad is an employer of record. I am, I am also a paid direct support person because woo-hoo, the country recognized the fact that the outcomes are better with family members being personal care. And I don't, you know, I had to put my job and so forth. So we are recognizing that.
So his dad is the employer on record. I am also a paid direct support professional because, you know, the country recognized after COVID and the worker shortage that there were better outcomes and less, basically almost less fraud when you had self-directed, paid family members supporting the individual. So I think that's something that we're working on keeping in Alabama. So that, that looks good. It was, it was, it was an option during COVID and still is. So Kyle has on his, four people on his staff, including me.
So I'm wrapping up. We'll tell you, I mentioned earlier, five hundred initial slots in the CWP. We now have an additional five hundred and ninety-seven attrition slots. And what attrition slots are, as people pass away, they maybe leave services, those slots convert from the ID, living at home waiver over to the CWP. So by nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four, we hope to have one thousand ninety-seven people enrolled into the CWP. And I thank you.
All right, so real quick, we're using a lot of, do I need the mic? Are we good? Okay. We're using a lot of abbreviations. Everybody knows CWP now, right, Community Waiver Program. We talked about HCBS, Home and Community-Based Services. And you saw up here PCP. Everybody knows what a PCP, Person-Centered Plan is, right? Okay, so all of those things combined to go into a bunch of resources we're going to pass out to you and what Veronica was kind of referring to with choice and freedom and the guardianship reform movement and supportive decision-making. So we're halfway there. I'm going to stop for questions on CWP. Any, I think we got most of our questions for self-directed and any questions on Person-Centered Plan because everybody, Person-Centered Plan, if you're in this system, everybody should know or at least have one or start working with one as far as what that is. Anything online, Alex?
A question about how we can find out about upcoming town hall meetings for Region Threes. You might just want to.
Right. Okay, so right now, what, what ARC of Alabama is sponsoring is the next one will be, we're doing one in every region. The next one will be June in Mobile and I think it's June seventh. Am I getting that date right? And the times are staggered, the days are staggered because we need to make sure we're hitting every part of the day for parents who do work. And we've even got one on a Saturday that's on the weekend for parents that just can't get off during the day at all. So June seventh in Mobile, that one is going to be from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty, all right? And then in July, we've got it on a Saturday, July fifteenth. That one is in Huntsville and that one will be also in the morning, Saturday morning from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. And then in August, I think the date was August seventh, which should be, is that a Thursday or a Friday? It's one of those. Then it's not that, because we didn't do any on a Monday. Eleventh, all right, thank you. I don't have a calendar in front of me. And so that one will be from one-thirty to three-thirty, like this one is in the afternoon. And then the last but not least is going to be in Montgomery. We'll wrap it up at the regional offices in Montgomery and that will be September seventh, that's where the seven came in on, and that's a Thursday. So, and that one will also be one-thirty to three-thirty. So any questions on that? What the plan is or what the goal and idea is with all of these is so that we're not all sitting here all day long, listening and absorbing that much information at one time, is to have one expert speaker come in at each town hall and as they get archived, you will collectively by the end of the summer have an expert speaking on each of these topics. So today, our expert speaker was Mr. Byron White that joined us from Montgomery on CWP. And then down in Mobile, in June, we're going to be focusing heavily on HCBS and we'll have Dr. Eric Peebles speaking to us about that. And he's with the Independent Living Centers. So we're excited, hope that everybody, if you can't come in person, you can at least tune in online. We did get a really good recommendation at the last minute this morning to have a Zoom component in addition to our Facebook Live and Alex is setting that up for us, just like we did with the Partners in Policy Making Program. So we've, we feel like we've done well trying to get every time of day, every day of the week, different avenues for participation. But certainly if you have more ideas or suggestions, we welcome them. All right, any more questions?
Mr. Powell's asking for confirmation on the date in August.
Oh, August eleventh, right? Is that Daryl?
Yeah.
Yeah, we secured, let Daryl know, we secured the regional offices. He's probably thinking he's on the hook for the location, but we got it covered.
It's August eleventh, it's one-thirty with the regional pull-offs.
Yeah. We are, we're going to put it out online and it's going to circulate through email. If you, there was a sign-up sheet here. I hope everybody got to sign up on. If you signed up on that, we'll be putting it out that way as well, based on the contact information you gave us. So.
We're unable to write those dates down. You can go to our website, thearcofalb.org. That count, invite and dates are on there. They're also being placed on the Alabama Department of Mental Health website. So you can go, in the next few days, it should be on the three-ten board sites. So plenty of places to go look or you can always just call us at the ARC of Alabama. We usually had to tell you when we're coming to your location.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to pass out resources that are digital resources. I didn't want to spend this, I didn't want to weigh you down this much because there's about twenty pages here that you could hang on to and take home or you can just look it up online, either way. But I'm going to pass these around and hopefully you'll kind of see where we're gathering most of our information from. We're going to tag team. Thank you. All right, so that, that's our resource list for today. HCBS, Home and Community-Based Services. I'm going to touch on it, Dr. Eric Peebles will go into much more detailed information. I think you've kind of probably noticed a theme and the theme is, or has been for the last eight to ten years, honestly, freedom, independence and more choice, right? And so that's what Home and Community-Based Services is. Our federal government has finally recognized the fact that when given the right supports, people like Kyle, people like my son Colby, people that we all serve can certainly do more with less if they have the right supports. And so Home and Community-Based Services is just that. It's providing the right supports to get people out into the community to live the same way you and I do, whether that's working, whether that's volunteering, whether that's choosing a church they want to go to on the weekends, whether that is hanging out with their friends in whatever club they want to participate with. Home and Community-Based Services takes somebody out of the isolated segregated mindset that, am I moving around too much, sorry? But mindset that we've all been accustomed to just because, for lack of a better word, tradition. We've become believers in that's what we do because that's the way we've always done it, maybe. And that's not necessarily the best way to do it. When we have recognized that we have all these natural supports at our fingertips, if we just learn how to tap into them, right? So I think supportive decision-making kind of plays into that as well. Home and Community-Based, it's not, it's not even an option anymore as far as our federal government is concerned. Let me rephrase it and put it to you this way. If a provider is not in compliance with home and community-based settings, the services rule, the settings rule for their services, then that person is not necessarily going to be eligible, that provider, that person is not necessarily going to be eligible for the funding that goes with that. So y'all see how that works. To be in compliance with and get the funding that's coming from our federal government, then you have to meet these certain compliance rules and standards. And those are basically in a nutshell, clear. And those are basically in a nutshell, clear, plain, and simple. You can't stay in an isolated segregated setting. You have to be able to have these natural supports and access them when you want, where you want, how you want, right? That's the, that's the nutshell of it. That's the idea behind it. And so, community experience, taking people out of the home, going out into the community, that's all part of it. Because you and I, if we're gonna be honest, don't sit at home or don't sit in one-day-program setting all day, every day. We just don't do that. We live our lives the way we choose. We make the choices. We even decide where, when we're gonna wake up in the morning. For most of us, you have a job, you decide if you like that job and wanna keep that job, right? Um, so that's the goal of Home and Community Based Settings. And we really, with this new waiver system, we are really meeting a lot of those standards in a way we've never been able to before. So um, I encourage everybody to tune in, especially in June, when we get to dive a little bit deeper. Um, questions about that, that a non-expert can answer? There's a better expert over here too, but.
Providers fall under the Home and Community?
If they're receiving CMS, CMS is Center for Medicaid Services.
Right.
So if they're receiving that federal funding, yes ma'am.
So and if they're not compliant?
Does she, do we need to re-ask that question? Okay.
Does, um, do all providers like group homes fall under the Community, Home and Community Based Services? And you said? Yes?
Yes, if they're receiving federal funding. Another, okay, so let me answer it this way. Sometimes you have a situation where there's private pay involved, so the federal government is not part of that, right? We would like to think and hope and believe, just like any private Christian school, that you're still meeting those standards. But they're not necessarily forced to comply because they're not receiving those federal dollars. Does that make sense? If they're receiving those federal dollars, then yes.
So for example, if you have a Christian-based nonprofit church that was offering day services, and they're, they're uh, they, they, they file their day hab program as a faith-based, you know, nonprofit organization and they're receiving private dollars. They would not fall on, fall under, uh, would not have to meet these guidelines. You can't force them to meet the guidelines. But if it was a day program, like Kim said, that was receiving, I think, you know, some of these, some of these programs, eighty percent of their money comes from the federal government and twenty percent comes from the state. So that's a big chunk. And if they are not meeting these Home and Community Based Settings guidelines and mandates, um, they have, you know, they have certain time periods to do that and to make an attempt to try. But if they just flat out are not doing it or cannot do it for whatever reasons, then they lose that eighty percent funding. And not too many of them can keep their doors open, you know, when they lose that big chunk of funding.
United ability would fall under?
Their day hab program would fall under that because they have people that attend their day hab that are Medicaid uh, Medicaid uh, participants. So since they have a Medicaid waiver or Medicaid, they are paying for their day hab services with their Medicaid dollars, which are coming from the federal government.
And I also say this, um, get it in your Person Centered Plan. We've had a lot of really good experiences with tweaking those Person Centered Plans as providers to make sure that the person who the plan is for is offered those choices to be out in the community, go where they wanna go, do what they wanna do. Um, different waivers have different allotment numbers, different waivers have different services. But at the end of the day, you really wanna be carefully watching that Person Centered Plan and read up. I, I beg you, I'm pleading with you, from a parent to a, I'm gonna take off my professional hat and I'm gonna get in trouble for this later, but we'll deal with it. From a mom to another mom, go read up on the HCBS standards and then look at your Person Centered Plan. And ask yourself, does this match? Does this look like we're meeting, we're in compliance with these things? Um, that's what I would do, if I were you. Alright, my professional hat's back on. Okay, so everybody got their resources? And I am gonna move right along to Guardianship Reform. So, again, another traditional, this is what we're gonna do because that's the way we've always done it. Mindset has been, and it happened to us in our schools, as soon as your child graduates from high school or turns nineteen in Alabama, and a lot of other states it's eighteen, but in Alabama it's nineteen. A lot of the school IEP team, the teachers, the administrators will tell you, and I really wanna believe they have the best of intentions and they're just doing what they've been told, but they will tell you, it's time for you to consider becoming your child's guardian. And if you want to continue to participate in these IEP meetings, you're gonna have to be their guardian. If you want the doctors to talk to you after they turn nineteen and you're going to the doctor visits with them, you're gonna have to be their guardian. That's the way it was framed. That's why it was put to us. So, what we realized as we're growing into this new age of choice and freedom and independence is that when you are under guardianship, you lose a lot of the rights that take away those choices. You lose a lot of the rights that prevent you from having those freedoms. And so the way we figured that out personally was with through kind of exploring the Think College Program Network. And I'll never forget this, my son said to me, and I love the way he asked it, if you'll pay attention to the words he used when he asked it. We got done at a band concert and all the seniors got up and they presented to the rest of the band and the audience where they were gonna go for college. Colby had not had that discussion yet with me. My son was in band and participating in band, but as a freshman, we had not talked about college. It was not on the table for discussion at that point in time. When the band concert was over, Colby got in the car and immediately said, "Mom, where am I gonna go to college?" So I've completely taken back, I was caught off guard. But I love how he asked it, because in his mind, he wasn't asking if, or when, or how. He had already determined he's going to college. He said, "Where? Where am I gonna go to college?" And so, I had to come back into my thinking and my, um, this is scary, I don't wanna let you go to college. Things could happen, you could get hurt. That whole providing the dignity of risk mindset that HCBS is trying to take us to and grapple with that, and then realize there are programs out there. You can go to college. If you have an intellectual disability, does not mean college is off the table now, today. So, long story short, fast forward, we realized that for him to qualify for one of these Think College Programs, ninety-nine percent of them required or expected, it was preferred, that you come in as your own guardian. In other words, your parents are not your guardians, right? That's what these programs were requiring. So here we are with the school, on one hand, telling us you've gotta become his guardian, our, our high school. And then the college programs telling us, you cannot be his guardian. So we got to work real quick, um, enter ADAP, enter some other agencies that we know and trust and love that guided us in that decision-making process. And at the end of the day, we looked at guardianship closely enough to realize that the rights he would lose would hold him back in life significantly enough that he would be missing out on a lot of the opportunities we believed he deserved. And so, we said, "Okay, Colby, we will not be your guardian." But Alabama's got some laws in place that are not looking too good if that's the route we're gonna go. So another fast forward, long story quick, we started looking at the legislation involved and realized there's a whole national movement going on for Guardianship Reform right now, and it starts with Supported Decision Making. And that's a new thing that we're loving. The Colby Act was passed, the governor signed it, it's now a law. And we are happy to say Alabama is now one of only eight states that actually have a law in place that support Supported Decision Making. There's actually thirteen that are in the process of trying to do it and thirty-two that have officially looked at it. But um, hopefully, within five to ten years, every state will get there. I'm just so glad Alabama's not the last one. That was super encouraging for me. So I'm gonna pass out information on Supported Decision Making. It's front and back. Um, a new law, and it's in place so you can take that and share it with friends. And then, we're gonna wrap this all up. Y'all, yes?
One of the wonderful services on the CWP waiver is the benefit counseling services. And um, that's another thing that, uh, that we are going through right now. Uh, we have a wonderful benefits counselor um, with our waiver, and I think she's also might be working with some of the CWP waiver. But she has been, um, that's a really great service on the waiver that can really help families navigate all of those uh, types of, of planning for uh, your son or daughter, long-term, or your cousin, long-term uh, facilitation. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you. Do we have any questions online, Alex? Okay, any questions in the room on that? Alright. We're good, that's the resource list I passed around that we're gonna post into the comments. Yep, we'll post the links into the comments, the links that are the handouts we're passing around right now. Okay. Okay, so, yes ma'am. Alright, and then, real quick, I've got some Community Waiver Program handouts and some self-directed handouts to go along with Byron's. And we've got one more question from the audience. If a parent has guardianship but determines that it's not beneficial to their child, can they retract the guardianship and what are the penalties? That's a great question. So, yes, they absolutely can. It's much easier today than it used to be, guardianship or conservatorship. We all have our own ideas and opinions on Britney Spears. But suffice it to say, she brought a lot of attention and awareness to the subject, and I think that that was a good thing. Um, I thought, I don't know that people understood before that, that you can undo it, that it's possible to undo. Um, and I truly believe that only because there was as much money and as much spotlight at stake is why it was necessarily that hard for her. I want everybody to Google Ginny Hatch from Virginia. That's where all this started. That's where the first case originated from. And she has an intellectual disability. She has Down Syndrome. And Ginny Hatch was very um, aggressive in a really good way to get this started around the nation. So it's definitely doable now. And um, in Alabama, it's way easier now with Supported Decision Making. So ADAP can help you with that. They are a free legal service. ADAP is Alabama Disability and Advocacy Program. They're located in Tuscaloosa, um, right off the campus. But if you have another lawyer you know of, you can do it that way too. Um, but yes, you can absolutely undo what has been done if you're trying to get out of a guardianship. We know several people who have done that. Great question. Okay, I've got Community Waiver Program handouts I'm gonna pass around. I've got self-directed service pamphlets I'm gonna pass around. And then I've got different services with a QR code right here that you're gonna wanna scan that kind of talks about the provider network services available to you, kind of directs you in, in that way. Alright, last but not least, I did not wanna leave, lose, lose this opportunity. These are what Colby and I and his team, Colby has ten people on his team. Colby has a really big team. I don't believe that there's a right or a wrong way to build a team of supportive decision-makers. I think you can do that however it works best for you. So if you've got three people, or six people, or nine people, or twenty-eight people, however you wanna run a Supported Decision Making team is how you should do it because that works for you and your loved one, right? This is how Colby and I do it, and it has, we've been doing this for four years now and it has worked wonderfully. We use something called the Life Course Tools. Alabama adopted the Life Course Tools many years ago. And we've been able to access a lot of those resources. You can too, you can go online. That's one of the resource links on the page. But they've got a whole entire menu option just dedicated to Supported Decision Making. So I would strongly encourage you to go to lifecoursetools.com, look that up. And even if, here's my closing remark, even if you have already decided guardianship has to happen here, it's necessary, we're sticking with it. That doesn't rule out Supported Decision Making. You can still use Supported Decision Making alongside guardianship. It may make it a little more tricky, but it's doable. And to be able to offer options in guided conversation about what do you think about choosing these things in your daily life, in your healthy living, in your social life, in your safety and security, your community living, your advocacy and engagement, all those different things can start to create empowerment to the point where they're speaking up more for themselves and they realize they have a voice and they realize they get to choose and they have a say-so. So, I'm gonna pass these two out too. Alright.
The question came through chat was, if you don't live in the eleventh county that's represented that Byron showed on there, uh, can you be a participant in the C, or get on the waiting list of the CWP? And yes, you can. Yes, you can.
You follow the same process. You call the one eight hundred, three six one four four nine one call center.
Alright, any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
What would be the disadvantage of undoing guardianship?
That's very personal and individualized. Um, I would, the first thing I would look at are communication. It, what, there's, so there's a big difference between being non-verbal and being non-communicative. Most, everybody is communicative. So you've gotta determine what degree of communication will be required and then try to match that up with where does this fit in the guardianship? Does it fit with the money? Does it fit with the healthy living? Those kind of things. So I would just like try, advise you to make that on an individualized basis.
Now, do you have to be on this thing waiting list? And if you're just starting, starting this process, how long do you think it'll probably take?
Are you looking at me? That's Byron.
Somebody who just completely has none.
So, there is only one waiting list. So regardless of the waiver, people are pulled from the, from the waiting list. So if you're in eleven counties or in the other fifty-six, you still follow the same process to get on the waiting list.
But they just go, and nothing to do with IDD or LAH or any of that?
Nope.
You just pick up the phone and get yourself on the list?
Yep. One waiting list for all three waivers.
Alright, uh, once again, I wanna thank everyone in-house here for coming. Um, and now, all the ones out there in virtual land, thank you for attending. Um, as you research this stuff and, and read these pamphlets and questions pop into your head, um, you can, two ways, you can wait till the next town hall and join, or you can email me and I'm gonna give you the very simplest one. It's tim at thearcaval dot org. at thearcaval.org. And you send me the questions, and I'll get you a response as quickly as I can. Um, I want to thank Byron for coming and sharing his expertise. I want to thank Alex at Alabama Cares for putting on this event and helping us. I want to thank Veronica, Kyle, and Nikki for speaking and sharing their daily lives. And thank you for your questions. I want to thank Kim for, you know, when Social Commissioner Sawyer said, I need help, I need education to the parents and the families. And, uh, the Ark of Alabama took that, and the vision that we've had, I explained it to Kim what I wanted, and she's taken this and ran with it, and has set up a good, uh, five sessions, and, um, I appreciate that, Kim. Um, in closing, if you find that you enjoyed this, you got information, share it with your friends, your other family members, your church members, your cousins, your aunts, your anybody you want to share it with, and tell them, come on into the next one. And they don't have to be, you know, in that area, that region. Like we have the live feed, we have the YouTube and the Zooms that can join there. So if you think it was beneficial, please share it because we want to reach as many as we can. So thank you for coming today. Be safe in your travels home and have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, before everybody leaves, I promised Lorenzo, who could not be with us today like he had wanted to be, that I would put in a plug for the Is Able Center that has been since twice accredited, CARP accredited. They provide plenty of services here. They are open at least four days a week, sometimes five. But they've got a list of their services I'll pass around. They do everything from, um, group support to grief support to computer training for different people with different disabilities. They've got independent living skills, classes, lots of fun stuff going on here. So if you haven't heard about or visited the Is Able Center, please come. You can go online and look it up with the information on the table. But if you don't go online, you can drop by. It's www.is, I S A B L E, isable.org. Um, Lorenzo would be glad to have you. But we just really appreciate him letting us use his center today. So thank y'all so much.